Good evening, welcome to the weekly meeting of the Lincoln City Council. I would like everyone to stand with me as we do pledge allegiance. That will be followed by a moment of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with L B eight ninety-eight, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of the business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an agenda item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make a short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, and whether you're speaking in favor of or in opposition to an item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the city council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meeting of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date, nor planned for a future agenda. Madam Clerk, would you call the first item for us tonight?
Yes, just a reminder, due to the Thanksgiving holiday, the city council will not meet on Monday, November twenty-sixth. Our first item of business is our public hearing consent agenda, items one through three.
Thank you, I noticed that Ms. Moore's in the audience for item one A. Would you come forward, please? Thank you. I'm gonna make up for a little faux pas and say thank you, Dr. Moore, for coming.
Thank you for the honor of being considered for this appointment. Mr. Schob told me that I should tell you a little bit about myself, so I will just tell you that I am retired from Lincoln Public Schools. I am mostly retired from Bryan College of Health Sciences. I'm enjoying the opportunity to serve in several community roles in retirement, and I'm really honored to be considered for this. I think a community health endowment is a really unusual, unique, and wonderful asset for this community. To have an endowment whose purpose is to further community health is a great opportunity, and I'm glad to be considered to be part of the governance of that endowment. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Do we have questions for disappointing? And this is part of the public hearing, does anyone in the audience who would like to speak about this appointment? Thank you very much for coming.
You're welcome.
Teresa, are there other items on our consent agenda we need to address?
Is there anybody else that would like to speak to any item on the consent agenda? All right, if not, we can vote on these items. Item one A was introduced by Raybold, would someone move that?
So moved. Motion by Councilman Camp and a second by Councilwoman Gaylord Baird, excuse me. Would you call the roll, please?
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Items one B and two A through E were introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Camp, second by Councilwoman Christensen, discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next then are our public hearing items. We ask those of the general public coming forward to testify to please clearly state your name, spell your name, give your address, and sign in on the sign-in sheet laying on the podium. Our first item of business is our public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. I'll call items four A and B together, they're the application of D B Cooper's Hijackers Lounge for a Class C liquor license at three seventeen South Eleventh Street, as well as the related manager application of Jason Ortmeier.
Is there someone, oh, there comes someone.
Just wait.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. Just state your name and address, Jason.
Jason Ortmeier, thirty-four oh-one North Seventy-Fourth Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, six-eight-five-oh-seven.
Mr. Ortmeier, thank you for coming forward, tell us a little bit about your application.
We're just doing a little lounge over about two blocks over from here. It's going to be named after D B Cooper, kind of the mysterious unknown hijacker of the seventies. Mystery of not knowing, so that's kind of what we're theming it after. It's more a cocktail lounge, high-end, upper level, so we'd love to have you guys stop by any night and check it out.
You say it's been named after you?
No.
Are you admitting something here?
No, I think he's a little bit older than I am.
He'll parachute in at your opening.
I'm afraid of heights, so that counts me out.
Are there questions from the council about this application? Just, thank you very much, is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify on this agenda item? Thank you, then we'll move to our next one?
All right. I'll go ahead and call items four C through H, but I will note for the record that the applicant has requested that the public hearing in action be continued to December third. They are all at the application of Western Oil Two LLC, doing business as Speedy Mart twenty-eight eleven for a Class D liquor license at twenty-thirty South Twenty-seventh Street, Speedy Mart twenty-eight ten for a Class D liquor license at fifty-seven fifty-seven South Eighty-Fifth Street, and the application of Speedy Mart twenty-eight thirteen for a Class D liquor license at fifty-five zero-one Holders Street. The manager on the applications is Luke Moser. Is there anyone from the general public who'd like to speak on these items?
This item will be delayed to our next meeting, but we do have a public hearing, if you'd like to speak on this application, anyone in the audience is welcome to at this time. Seeing no one come forward, let's move to our next agenda item.
I'll call items four I and J together, they're the application of Round One Bowling and Amusement for a Class I liquor license at sixty-one hundred O Street, space one oh-nine A, and the related manager application of Jesse Short.
Good evening.
Raise your hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Tim O'Neill, eight hundred Lincoln Square, one-twenty-one South Thirteenth Street, here on behalf of Round One Entertainment, seeking a Class I liquor license. It's a new family entertainment center that will have unique bowling aspects, an arcade, billiard, party rooms, and a really neat venue for all ages of the community. It's in Gateway Mall, and they're planning to open up in mid-December. Happy to answer any questions you may have. One thing I would note, there was an oversight and error in the application as far as the disclosure of the traffic violations for the manager. The police chief's letter does indicate the correct traffic, non-alcoholic related violations, and we apologize for that oversight, and happy that he disclosed it for us.
Councilman Eskridge?
Yes. Tim, it looked like there are a number of these all over the country, so is this part of a...
Yeah, it's a national chain, the parent company's out of Japan, and incorporated in California, and has spread this concept all over the country. It's a proven concept that really is family geared, and so they, especially with liquor, I think we should point out that we do limit ages after certain hours, and do have security, full-time security staff after seven, too, to be sure that there's no issues in this age group particularly. And so, we're very sensitive to this as a family environment, not a bar, and so, we're really focused on making sure that that's on the right path.
Right, thank you.
Other questions from the council? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the chamber that would like to testify on this agenda item? Seeing no one coming forward, Teresa, where are we on our agenda now?
All right, item four K, application of Toast for the addition of a catering license to their Class C liquor license at five seventy Fallbrook Boulevard, suite one zero five.
Good evening, Mike Martin, nineteen, oh, I'm sorry.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thanks.
Mike Martin, nineteen twenty-five Dover Court.
Mike, welcome, thank you for coming out. Tell me a little bit about this catering, I'm a little fuzzy on all this.
Well, we received our liquor license almost ten years ago with a catering designation going along with it. Somewhere along the line, it got removed, whether we didn't pay the application fee, whether it was overlooked, nobody really knows. And so, when we went to apply for a couple catering permits this year, it was noted that it wasn't on the license anymore, so we're just trying to get it back on there.
Trying to get things all squared away, thank you. Are there questions from the council? Thank you very much, is there anyone in the chamber that would like to testify on this agenda item? Thank you very much, Teresa?
All right, next is item four L, manager application of Teresa Lampkin for Boss's Pizza and Chicken at one thousand Saunders Avenue.
Is there someone here, oh, there we are. I need to slow down, right, be patient, stop trying to rush through this.
Would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
Teresa Lampkin, one thousand Saunders Boulevard, Avenue, I'm sorry.
Ms. Lampkin, welcome, tell us a little bit about your application.
We're switching from one manager that got transferred to South Dakota, and I'm gonna take over the liquor license if approved.
I understand. Are there questions from the council? You're just adding your name to the license because the other person's in South Dakota?
Yes, sir.
No questions from the council? Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the chamber that would like to testify on this agenda item? Seeing no one, let's move to our next item.
All right, next is item four M, manager application of Faith Hanson for Quality Inn at thirty-two hundred Northwest Twelfth Street. If anyone is here to testify on this item, they may come forward, however, we have a request to place this on pending, no date certain.
This is the public hearing portion, would anyone like to speak on this agenda item? I see no one.
Okay.
So, yes.
Mr. Chair, I have several motions to make.
Thank you, Councilman Camp.
So, it isn't too confusing, first I'd like to move approval of items four A through four B.
Second.
Have a motion in second for items four A through four B. Is there any discussion among the council? Hearing none, I would ask you to call the roll.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
And next, Mr. Chair, I'd move that we delay till the December third meeting, item four C through items four H.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Camp and a second by Councilwoman Lamb to delay. Is any discussion on that motion?
I should say carry it over for public hearing.
Carry over, hold over till our next meeting.
Thank you.
Seeing none, would you call the roll?
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
And next, Mr. Chair, I'd move approval of items four A, excuse me, four I through four L.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Camp, second by Councilwoman Lamb to approve items four I through four L. Teresa, would you call the roll, please?
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
One more time, right?
I think there's seven of us.
Seven to zero, thank you.
And finally, Mr. Chair, I would move that item four M be placed on pending with no date certain.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Camp, second by Councilwoman Raybold to place on pending with no date certain. Discussion of the motion? Seeing no one, would you call the roll, please?
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Next then are public hearing resolutions. Item five A is accepting a report and new impending claims against the city for October sixteenth through thirty-first, two thousand eighteen.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on pending claims against the city? I see no one coming forward, can we move to our next agenda item?
Sure, next is item five B, approving a request to the city performance audit committee pursuant to chapter four point six-six of the Lincoln Municipal Code to conduct an audit of the Emerald Ash Bore Response and Recovery Plan, including progress that has been made in that plan, progress that is expected in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, and the expenditures that are currently budgeted to carry out the plan.
Hi, Chris Connolly, Chief Assistant City Attorney. I'm really just here to sort of introduce this, wasn't really gonna make a presentation. I know that some items were requested by the Audit Committee, and the chair of that, Ms. Lamb, can probably provide more information.
Yeah, thank you, so, the performance audit committee, as you know, we sent out a series of emails, and we got some responses, and the primary response from council members seemed to be, let's be totally abrasive where we are each step of the way on the Emerald Ash Bore Recovery, and even though we'll have some information before us, a plan of sorts, here in the near future, this is a performance audit that will be completed with a report given to this body August thirty-first of next year.
Thank you, Councilwoman, is anyone else on the city council have any questions or like to make statements about this? Agenda item? Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this agenda item, five B? Seeing no one? I see Parks Director Lynn Johnson just came in, would you like to speak about the Emerald Ash Bore before we move on?
I don't have time.
All right, I'm okay with that. Teresa, can we move on?
Yes, we'll go on to item five C then, appeal of Chris Kidwell of Planning Commission's approval of special permit one-eight-zero-two-one, the application of Heritage Lakes LLC to develop a community unit plan consisting of two hundred ninety residential dwelling units on approximately ninety-six point one-eight acres, with requested waivers on property generally located at South Ninety-third and A Street.
This is an item we delayed from a previous meeting, and we will hear it today with public hearing. Mr. Houston, thank you for coming forward.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, members of the council, my name is Tom Houston, my address is two-three-three South Thirteenth Street, suite nineteen hundred here in Lincoln, on behalf of the East A Street Coalition and Chris Kidwell. Two weeks ago, the council did take action and approve four agenda items, including the comprehensive performance issue for the swapping of the small parcel of ground, the annexation of the approximately a hundred acres of the Phase One ground, the change of zone for the Phase One ground, and also an annexation agreement. The remaining item on your agenda is the appeal of a special permit that I had filed on behalf of Mr. Chris Kidwell. Mr. Kidwell owns approximately seventy acres that is included in the coalition, but is identified as Phase Two ground for purposes of the community unit plan, so it is not included in the community unit plan. And the sole issue that we had is whether or not a connecting street, identified as Signature Drive, should be constructed as a through street or as a cul-de-sac. And I had pointed out that the ordinance of the city does permit, that this issue really is arising because of the block length requirement under the subdivision ordinance that requires block lengths to exceed no more than one thousand three hundred and twenty feet, and we were asking for an exception to that because of the physical barriers that are present on Mr. Kidwell's property. On the overhead, I would point out, this is Signature Drive that would, and this is Mr. Kidwell's property, located south of A Street on the east side of the Rollis property. The community unit plan right now would require this street to be constructed, and the purpose of this exhibit is to demonstrate that it would be impacting wetlands and the pond area. And the motion to amend that I had filed would permit this configuration so that West Signature Drive would be ended in a cul-de-sac as opposed to a through street. Mr. Kidwell's property is not before you today, that's what makes this somewhat of a challenge procedurally, but I thought we ought to at least raise the question and ask it now so that, rather than erecting a permanent barricade, that at least we'd have an option to look at this cul-de-sac option. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Councilwoman Lamb?
Thank you.
And Councilman Camp?
Thank you for being here, Mr. Houston. So as I understand it, if the waiver is not granted, then the part, the unit that's going forward, the, I'm sorry, development that's going forward, will end in a permanent dead end, if you will, barricade. And then if this later goes, Mr. Kidwell's land later goes to the Planning Commission, and in fact, if he's allowed the waiver at that point in time, there will always be this permanent barrier in the initial plan.
I think that is likely, because of the complication of the natural barriers. And, I mean, the real challenge is that, and I advise most of my development clients, when possible, avoid any design impacting wetlands, because it's a minimum two years, two and a half years to obtain an individual permit through the federal regulatory process in today's world.
And so, and you've done this a really long time as an attorney, representing a lot of clients.
I have, yeah, a couple of weeks I knew you.
I won't, yeah, I won't ask how long, but, in any event, with all these physical barriers, I know that the waiver is certainly permissible with these, for the Planning Commission with these barriers. And in your estimation, I said we have the LES substation, we have the wetland area and the pond. In your estimation, would that waiver be granted? Or would there be a good chance that it would be granted?
I think this property satisfies the conditions required for the approval of the waiver under the subdivision ordinance.
Okay.
I believe so.
Okay, so basically, if, what we're talking about is this is denied, is that we're gonna have a permanent barrier, and then Mr. Kidwell's gonna have a lot more time before he's able to determine whether he will be allowed to go forward with his...
Yeah, and Mr. Kidwell doesn't have a certain time schedule to move forward. He's looking at the development of his property and some options for that, but he doesn't have a time certain. He would have that opportunity when his development would come forward to request that waiver.
Thank you.
Councilman Camp?
Yes, Mr. Houston, thank you for coming. On this particular parcel that would have the cul-de-sac, how many homes or lots would be on that portion?
What we've identified is, I think there's twenty lots on that, on this area right here, on the south of A Street. And the subdivision ordinance prohibits more than forty on a singular access point, so we're less than, or approximately half of what is the maximum permitted.
Thank you.
Other questions? Councilwoman Raybold?
I remember last week when we discussed this, there was a concern about that there were no engineering studies done to determine the viability of putting a road through the wetland or the pond area. Has any effort been taken to make that determination? Because I'm pretty sure, even when they applied for the federal permit, they have to have the engineering studies already completed.
Yes, and the sequence is somewhat off-kilter here because of the fact that Mr. Kidwell's property is not going through the C U P process, but we have quantified it, and we have determined, at least based on this map, the number of acres or square feet of wetlands that would be impacted. And it is likely that that road would have to be elevated, which further impacts the wetlands because of the elevation change there. And all of that really complicates the ability to construct the road because of the further impact on the wetlands area itself.
But no engineering studies have been done to make that determination?
I'm not sure what you mean by engineering studies, we do have identified impact of the wetlands, which I consider to be the first step in that process. We have not done street profiles or anything with that regard, but we have identified the quantity of land impacted.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Christensen?
So, to your knowledge, does Mr. Kidwell envision any kind of development of his property that would necessitate or even allow a road to go through there?
No, simple answers, no. I think it's gonna be very difficult for Mr. Kidwell to take advantage of developing that northeastern portion of his property because of the pond and the wetlands area themselves.
So, right now, there's no future envisioned where a road would go through there?
I, well, looking at the map that you put up there, Mr. Houston, I don't remember the road being drawn. Is this a different rendering than we saw before? There was some issue about getting close to the power station, I mean, the LES substation.
Well, I had asked the engineers to actually bring the road further to the south, so it could possibly be double-loaded, so you get lots on the north and lots on the south. I think because of the existence of the wetlands caused by the wetlands delineation, it's gonna prevent that from occurring.
I seem to remember a conversation we had previously, you're trying to fit the road between the wetlands and the power station. And on the other side of the wetlands to the east, it doesn't seem from that drawing that there's an increase in the number of lots if the street were there. The cul-de-sac number of lots.
My recollection is that it increases by actually a couple, but it's a small number.
And that's, this is a preliminary drawing?
Yes, yeah, this has not been engineered to scale.
I understand. Are there other questions from the council?
Hi, Brad.
Is there anyone else that would like to testify? Your turn.
If there were engineering questions, I'd certainly be able to, and happy to answer any questions at this time.
Could you state your name?
Brad Marshall with Olson, six-one P Street, suite two hundred.
Welcome, Mr. Marshall. Were there other engineering questions? Councilman Eskridge?
Yeah, I mean, the big question seems to be this extension of the road onto Mr. Kidwell's property and the feasibility of doing that. I mean, connectivity is a big issue that we like to encourage, and you can see the connection to an eventual roundabout that will be on A Street, and probably that will be beneficial to the residents who would live in this area to have access to be able to go more easily to the west, and so, can you address that?
Yeah, absolutely, since the last meeting we had, we looked at this a lot closer from the feasibility of it crossing where it may cross and where it may make sense for it to be extended to and through Mr. Kidwell's property. It's feasible from an engineering perspective, a lot of things are, it just, you know, it becomes costly to do so, and what it is impacting. There's probably two, I think I'm reiterating some of those that have been spoken already, but there's two major issues here, the wetlands, that we'll have to go through the core engineers, and they'll have to determine if we are, if the applicant at that time is taking the approach that decreases or minimizes impacts of those wetlands. And so, we've calculated that where it's at is half an acre, and that is the limitation. At that point, we need to do an alternative analysis. That means showing the road in different locations to see if we can lessen the impacts, do an alternate studies, such as not, from the drainage perspective, maybe you have to build a bridge or something that spans those wetlands to minimize impacts. The second thing is the floodplain. And what that means is, if you're going to develop, which has kind of been thrown around from the planning perspective, well, you might be able to add... thrown around from the planning perspective, well, you might be able to add a couple of lots adjacent to the floodplain here. We'll have to raise any structure that is occupied above that floodplain, and that means raising that road approximately 10 to 12 feet. That's a bunch of assumptions, but, you know, if you have a house which has been kind of posed in this situation, and it has a basement, then that would have to be elevated above the floodplain elevation. So, it, it's possible, but there's a lot of things to overcome to make it happen.
Other questions? Councilwoman Raybold.
You know, I thought there was also an issue of having the planning commission have another review of this. Was that taken? Has that happened?
No, it has not. It has not.
It has not?
It has not. We appealed the decision, as I mentioned, I found myself in the usual position of appealing an approval that we had received, and, which I don't do, you know, haphazardly. It took a lot of, but in procedurality, that's what we, where we were. And I would reiterate, it's important, under all circumstances, to have the CUP approved. That does need to happen. That, the approval jurisdiction is now rests with the city council, so I do ask for that approval.
Councilwoman Lamb.
Yeah, could you clarify for us again then what the impact is on the vote, on the CUP, on this vote, vote on this particular resolution?
When we were here two weeks ago, I think you first voted on the motion to amend and did not reach the question on approval of the CUP, and because it was a three to three tie. So, I guess I would request that if the motion to amend were to fail, that in any event, that the community unit plan and the special permit be affirmed by the city council.
And the motion to amend would grant the waiver?
The motion to amend would grant the waiver and permit the cul-de-sac to be constructed.
I see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Camp.
Just listening here to what Mr. Marshall was saying too, if you're raising 10 feet or what have you, and structures and all, any idea what kind of cost that's going to add, whether it be a lot cost or to the?
Well, what I kind of failed to mention too, even though you do these things, it's actually going to limit the amount of developable property that it comes out of. Maybe I'll borrow that again.
Sure.
I guess, that's the cul-de-sac, that's the true. What we determined off of this, and you were to remap it, it may add some capacity for lots on the south side of.
Signature.
Of, yeah, of Signature Drive. So, you'd have to go a little bit further than what the, where the floodplain and wetlands actually are, and extend that. You, again, there's a balance when you start impacting wetlands and showing that you're doing everything you can do to minimize them. So, if there were lots on the north side, we'd actually have to extend that far enough west out of the green areas. They're shown on the wetlands. So, on here, you might be all the way to the driveway before you start adding lots, you know, single-family or townhomes or something like that. And on the south side, you might be able to extend it a little bit further to the east. To answer your question from the cost perspective, it's hard to put a number on something like that. I think the extension, we are talking a couple hundred thousand dollars. If you were to put a drainage structure to span the wetlands, you could easily double it, just from the drainage structure perspective. So, you could, you could quickly go from $200,000 with your road and utilities to a four or five hundred thousand dollar road extension. But I'd say that's a range and not given at this time without any correspondence or determination by the core engineers.
And on top of that, you said that doing that, you're going to reduce the number of developable, amount of developable land?
You'd be limited, I think.
And so, that's going to reduce the lots?
Yeah. You know, Mr. Kidwell has 70 acres here, and this roadway extension is essentially taking up the allowance of that half acre. This half acre would require him to mitigate on his property up to one acre at least, based on my experience, a two to one ratio for those impacts. And he would have to minimize the additional avoidance essentially for the rest of his development. That's, and you can see that on this, which is just the north half of his property, where those other areas of wetlands have already been determined.
And, Mr. Houston, you said on the other side, there could be a couple of lots you could add if you had a cul-de-sac?
I think the unit count, the lot count, does not really change materially between these two options of a through street or a cul-de-sac. But one of the challenges, as Brad mentioned, if Mr. Kidwell in total would have a half acre, ability to impact a half acre of wetlands, he's got a large site, that, none of that's been engineered. I mean, we haven't looked at any of that. His plans are not ready to move forward.
The plant for the road?
Correct. Or the development of how his property could be laid up.
And then Councilwoman Gaylor Baird first, and Councilman Eskridge.
Is the pond man-made, or at least the top portion of it, man-made as opposed to natural body of water?
I believe it's all man-made. Yeah, that dam was built. For jurisdictional purposes with Army Corps of Engineers, that does not matter for waters in the United States determination.
Right. We've been told the street would be outside of the floodplain and that it would be just off the edge of the wetlands. Do you want to respond to that claim made by the other folks who have reviewed this? I mean, I am a little uncomfortable with the entire discussion of something that is completely speculative. We do not know what will come forward on this property. It could be sold, a completely different vision for it could come forward, but as long as we're speaking speculatively, can you respond to the claim that the street could actually be put to the edge of the wetlands and outside the floodplain?
Apparently Brad can.
Absolutely, I can. What we did was, with the location of Signature Drive that had gone through Planning Commission, we showed that extension at that location. It is possible to push that drive all the way to the north, which, pushing it to the north, you would butt the LES property. And it would be, it would be pushed probably on a footprint, pushed all the way to the edge of that floodplain. I think we did some rough calculations, and it's within a couple of feet of that floodplain, but it will be elevated as such that fill-in bankmen and so forth will impact it. Now, that being a relatively minor impact to floodplain in this area where it's a lot of, the ponding is creating backwater and so forth. And so, it's, the floodplain at that, at that, at that point, doesn't really create a major impact for, for the road, the roadway doesn't create a major impact on the floodplain, I should say, that way. However, again, if you're going to develop adjacent to it, you'll be elevating everything adjacent to it, to those road elevations that, again, probably won't change my analysis from raising that road 10 or, 10 or more feet. We did take a look, and the relative impacts of those wetlands are very similar. As you were to take it from where we show it today to if you were to move it to the north side, you'd be essentially impacting everything here just north of that area that we show impacted. That would all become impacts now, and be very similar in nature.
But you've seen this happen in other parts of town. You've got a connection in the floodplain already, 93rd Street, correct?
Yeah. 93rd Street will impact that property, the Rawlins property. It does have a crossing, yes.
Okay. And Tom, given that you represent the client to the east, is it not better for your client, who you believe will, with more certainty for all of us, that there will be residents there? Isn't it better for them to have more than one way in and out of their property, whether it's for emergency services or for kids who need to walk to school?
You know, I, for the Rawlins property, and that's always one of the challenges when you represent a coalition, there's multiple property owners. But I think the Rawlins property, I think it's kind of neutral for them. And there has been some discussion about the potential to actually build a sidewalk, maybe not a street, but build a sidewalk. I think there's much more room for that, and it can be engineered much more feasibly. But I think the Rawlins property is kind of a neutral on this issue.
Okay. And there's been talk about a permanent barricade, but isn't it not true that in the future, when it's not speculative, the road could either be built, a sidewalk could be built, or this could be closed?
And that's always the question, come back and enclose it. I mean, that's hard to do. I've never seen that done where a street's been installed and barricaded. I've never seen it come back and later improved. It just doesn't happen.
Councilman Eskridge, and then Councilman Camp.
So, Mr. Houston, let's look at a hypothetical with the, Mr. Kidwell's land. And given the challenges there, if he develops it, and what he wants to develop really has no use or benefit of a road being in there, that's something you could, could seek a waiver at that point in, in the development of his property?
Certainly. Yes. Yeah. There is some merit to making the council aware now of the facts and circumstances and challenges being faced by Mr. Kidwell and his property. We didn't want to lose the right to make this argument in the future, and we really wanted to preserve this argument that when his property may develop, that there's going to be real challenges. And we're just raising the question, does it make sense to permit the plating as a cul-de-sac or permit it, plated as a through street, which would lead to the barricade? But there's certainly another opportunity for Mr. Kidwell to make his case on whether or not his property complies with the requirements for the conditions for the approval of the waiver.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Camp.
Yes, Mr. Marshall, you were talking about, I think in response to Ms. Gaylor Baird, that you could move the road farther north, close to the LES station. Looking at the property to the east here, and I know that these are preliminary drawings and so forth, but then you'd have to change the position of the drive on the other side too, but you would have already built, so not knowing when the Kidwell property, so that becomes problematic, doesn't it? Because, I guess proceeding with the eastern portion, you designate somewhere there's a barricade or cul-de-sac, but if you designate the wrong spot, it's like two, a bridge being built from two sides, and it doesn't meet in the middle.
And I'll mention, when we did take a look at it, you were to shift that road to the north, we would lose one or two lots on the Rawlins property there. You know, you'd have to make the determination now, you're right. I mean, you have to be pretty much upfront as to where that roadway connection is going to land, and determine right now with the CUP and the planning aspect of that. So, when Mr. Kidwell did come forward with this application, that we could put it in the correct location.
Other questions from the council? So you paused, and you, yep. Is anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this agenda item? This is public hearing portion?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask Mr. Carey to come forward and answer a couple of questions for me.
David Carey with the Planning Department. I'm also having Stephen Ongson from the Planning Department join us.
Thank you. So, another part of this conversation is that the planning commission approved something, we're asking for a waiver to undo the approval. I'm a little fuzzy on where we are in procedure. Can you help me with that?
Yeah, it's a very good question. We followed up with the Law Department on that since our last discussion two weeks ago, and the legalities are that, that your action today certainly can stand on its own. There's no, there's no question about that as far as taking action on the waiver. So, we did get that cleared up. We would still say that in, under normal circumstances, we would want to have that discussion at the planning commission before it reached the city council or the county board for that matter. However, this is, as Mr. Houston was explaining, this is a pretty unique situation where we have a coalition of different property owners. We had two different property owners not able to come to a full agreement on how to lay things out, and that is the path that Mr. Houston took to appeal their own approval. So, what we do know is that there aren't going to be too many of these situations moving forward, so we're not quite as concerned with that part of it. So I think we probably, for this evening's purposes, I think we should be concentrating on trying to come to a decision on the waiver and then taking action on the special permit so that we, we can move forward in some way.
Thank you. Is Andrew Skunk, do you have anything to add?
Just, well, I agree on the part that the city council can approve it. I think a lot of the comments that were made actually point out exactly though why it would be beneficial if the city had seen the proposal and had it reviewed as part of the planning commission. What I have up on the viewer here does show actually what was in front of the planning commission and was reviewed by staff. That is where the Signature Drive was shown, being extended to the west. It was shown that it was going to go outside of the floodplain, any wetlands that were shown. It was going to be up against the LES substation. And so, when city staff were reviewing this, when emergency services and everyone was reviewing it, this is what was in front of us, and it was in front of the planning commission. All the drawings and things you've been shown today actually further extend this lot line here further to the south, which actually goes into some of the wetlands on this side of the property, and is in a different configuration than had been reviewed by the city. I'd also just quickly point out that we've spent a lot of time talking about the impact of the wetlands and the floodplain. Just straight to the east, this is another road connection, this connection to A Street, that goes through the wetlands. This is an area that is undeveloped today. There's not a driveway or a street or anything here. This goes through the floodplain, and this has lots on, no lots on either side of it, and it has a culvert and other expensive structures to build it. So, in any development, there are spots where you have to cross a floodplain or cross a stream or something, and there are impacts. There are impacts to wetlands on many other projects. There's impacts, we have to address the floodplain. So it's, it's actually the, when we were reviewing this, we were looking at it over here where it was actually going outside of the wetlands in the floodplain, and everyone acknowledged that you have to have sometimes connections, you have to dead-end streets. There's actually three other dead-end streets in this project that are going to other properties. And so, that's just typically part of the development process. So that's the, the one thing we felt was kind of missing in this is that there wasn't anyone who had had a chance to look at alternatives that you've seen tonight.
And I would add to that, that, I mean, I think the point was made earlier as well. The point here is that the future development of the property to the west is indeed very speculative. And so, in any situation like that, this is what we plan for is the further development of the area. We acknowledge that there are some challenges with that, but as Steve said, when we reviewed it, there were, there was a view of the plan and the future plan of that development of that property to the west that did mostly avoid those wetlands, and it is a way to do that. And it's not atypical for us to set things up this way. And so, we still stand by that recommendation to deny the requested waiver, but then to proceed with approval of the special permit tonight.
Questions from the council?
I have one more before you go. So the property to the west, there have been no plans submitted for development?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else in the audience who would like to testify on this agenda item?
Seeing no one coming forward, can we proceed with our agenda?
All right. We'll move on to our public hearing ordinance's second reading. Item 6A and B.
Hold on a moment.
Yes.
We're voting.
Oh, yes, vote. So sorry. All right, so we'll vote on these items. Item 5A is the report.
I'm going to call for pause again. Vice Chair asked me, reminded me to ask if there was a rebuttal from anyone. Mr. Houston, would you like to rebuttal any of these things? Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Still getting ahead of myself.
The only point of rebuttal I would want to make is that the connection that was pointed out along 93rd Street is based upon an existing driveway, and it would not be a new street. And that is significant from an engineering perspective.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, where are we?
Voting.
Voting.
All right. Item 5A is the report of new and pending claims for the period of October 16th through 31st, introduced by Raybold.
移到
Second.
You have a motion by Councilwoman Raybold, and a second by Councilman Christensen. Discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showe?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 5B is the request to the City Performance Audit Committee for the Emerald Ashboro Project, introduced by Raybold.
移到
Second.
You have a motion by Councilwoman Raybold, and a second by Councilman Christensen. Discussion of the motion? Seeing none, would you call the roll, please?
Camp?
Yes.
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor-Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item five C then is the appeal of Chris Kidwell of the Planning Commission's approval of special permit 1-8-0-2-1 introduced by Eskridge.
So moved. Second.
Here are motion by Councilman Eskridge and a second by Councilman Christensen. Now we have two votes on this, I'm sorry, Councilman Christensen.
I'd like to comment on this item. There's been a lot of discussion about how we might or might not put a street through there, but the bottom line in my discussions with Mr. Kidwell is this is a family property that's been in his family since the 1930s, and neither he nor his family has any intention of ever selling any of this land for development. They might develop some things for themselves for their own family use, but there will never, well, never's a long time, but there will not be in his lifetime certainly any attempt to develop this land in a way that would even allow a road to go through there. And they're bringing this forward was basically a way of saying, look, you guys can save yourself an ugly dead end. So that was what I took away from conversations, and I think any ideas about engineering and other, you know, other planned commercial development is just really way out of line because that's not what they're talking about to me. I don't know if you've talked about it, but this is, I think this is a public service, him saying, let's do it this way, so there's not never, not an ugly permanent dead end.
Okay, Councilman Camp first and Councilwoman Lamb?
Thank you. This has been an interesting discussion and a number of good questions have been raised. I've been trying to boil it down into one versus another, and I see that the driving factor here is our policy of wanting connectivity in developments, and so, which is a laudable goal. I heard Mr. Carey say this is even a unique situation, it's not normal where you have this configuration, and the more we talk about it, the more we're looking at the ability to more efficiently use the land, which we're trying to work on that in the city and getting more density and so forth. We're also talking about, we've got the wetlands here, we want to be environmentally sound on matters. If we're talking about taking a half acre and having to expend another acre to solve one half acre, if it could even be done, we're setting up a lot of elements here that, you look at the floodplain, and as Mr. Marshall was talking about, having to raise the homes' basements another 10 percent, whether it's just to get that crossing of 200,000 to 400,000 across the floodplain, let alone the cost for the construction of those homes with the rising height. Raising that height is another factor. I think it's also looking at something, we have an opportunity here to show the city is not going to unduly burden these developers who have tried to lay out as much as they can on this, that they want to proceed with the rawest development there on the east. And even if we say we'd like to get all these other Corps of Engineer studies or whatever, it just appears to be a lack of, or an unnecessary expense that may never be incurred, as Mr. Christensen was saying. And to me, it defies common sense not to go ahead and say, in this particular case, it's unique, as Mr. Carey was saying, let's go ahead and approve it as a cul-de-sac. We look at the Planning Commission, we look at the Planning Department, they are sending their judgment calls to us, but we are the decision-making body. I think we have an opportunity here to try and keep some of the construction costs down, to let developments proceed, get the density in the city, not have to extend our borders too much. It just seems to make common sense to go ahead and allow this one particular waiver and recognize it's not a precedent set situation. So I encourage my colleagues to support the appeal.
Councilwoman Lamb?
Yeah, in order to do that, I think we have to have a motion to amend, is that right? To the, I understood we had to vote on a motion to amend first?
Mr. Conley, would you help us a bit? I thought there were two also.
Yes, and I think that perhaps Councilman Christensen offered it last time. And I don't remember the exact wording, but-
Okay, I'm sorry, what's the question specifically? How many items were we voting on? Was there a motion to amend? Do we need to address that first before the-
There was a motion to amend last week and that lost.
And so we had put it-
There was nothing pending then at the moment.
No, there's nothing-
Did it lose or did we not vote?
It was a, it was a three-three. So it was a three-three.
And that was-
Right, and so then we were asked to delay this so that we could reconsider that motion before we actually voted on the underlying appeal. So the motion, if I understood, the motion to amend was to allow a waiver, and perhaps Mr. Houston can help us on that because I think-
So I think the motion had to be remade for us to readdress it since it lost.
Yes, if you're going to do another motion to amend, that's-
It devolved into a-
The motion to amend last week lost.
So we're now, we're voting on just the C-
Three-three.
Correct, yeah.
But we could have, if we introduce the motion to amend, what effect would that have? That's the question, I think.
Can-
What effect does it have on the overall, well, I guess, partially depends on what the motion to amend says.
Yeah, do you have the wording on that, Teresa?
Yes, let me read that for you. It says amend paragraph one A to provide quote waiver of block length requirements under LMC section 26.23130A for blocks one, eight, nine, and 13. And add a new provision as follows, add a note to the site plan to permit Signature Drive located on block 13 to be final platted alternately as a cul-de-sac identified as West Signature Court to be determined no later than approval of a special permit or preliminary plat of the property located to the west.
So moved.
Second.
Here are motion to amend by Councilman Christensen, which is second by Councilwoman Lamb.
I have a question.
Discussion of the, Councilwoman Raybold.
Was there a reconsideration of the amendment for this week?
No.
So it can be reintroduced again?
Mm-hmm. It can be re, yes, it can be reintroduced.
That's what we just did, didn't it? Isn't that what your motion was, Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
So we now have the motion to amend in front of us again?
Correct.
Correct. Is there a discussion of the motion to amend?
And so what's the bottom line, as you read through that, Mr. Conley, I got a little confused at the latter part of that statement.
This is the motion that would allow this property on the east side of Mr. Kidwell's property to end in a cul-de-sac rather than a dead end.
Mr. Se, would you help us, yeah?
Right, the waiver language, the waiver is to allow a block, a waiver from the block length requirements of the subdivision ordinance, that's the part about the waiver for block 13, and then the last section is to allow for the cul-de-sac to be constructed on the rawest property, which has been shown to you on the maps.
There's the motion before us. Additional discussion?
Just, just to reemphasize that while there are difficulties with the site and it is difficult to always get development to be in sync with different properties, having different vision for the future, I am sympathetic to that. The fact that this connection and all of the conditions that have been described have been known for months and months and months, yet this, this didn't go to the Planning Commission in the other form, it's, it's missing that piece of our process and coming to us without that. I'm just so uncomfortable with what the potential consequences are for that process to be replicated in the future with other developments or other proposals. So I don't, I will approve, I will support approval of the special permit, but I don't support this waiver.
Councilwoman Lamb?
Thank you. I, I realize the hesitancy on the part of my colleagues and I appreciate that. However, as stated, this is a very unique situation, and I think that at this point you're talking form over substance and to force someone to spend additional funds when the, if he wants to build retirement homes for his family is unreasonable. When we talk about moving forward, we should be, to have rules just for the sake of the rules is not, it does not make any common sense, and I think that at this point in time, there wasn't anything to bring forward, and I realize that they, there wasn't anything platted on Mr. Kidwell's property. And so it's, it's unreasonable for us to, I think, cause yet another dead end on this property when the likelihood of a road going through there is extremely small, when we have all these physical barriers that are evident for us and that there would be impact on the wetlands, and so I'm going to support the amendment, motion to amend.
Councilwoman Raybold?
I'm not going to support the motion to amend with the waiver because it's entirely reasonable for us to not speculate because I think Councilman Christensen said it very clearly that the property owner has no clear intention on what to do with the property at this point in time, so I think it makes common sense that we, we do not support a waiver until they come up with a, a development plan or program, and that may be five, six, 10, I don't know, years down the road, but I'm, I'm a little puzzled why we're, we're trying to take this up when it hasn't gone through the normal course of detail and attention, yet it comes up to us and it's, it's really speculative at this point in time, so I won't support it.
Councilman Camp?
When we adopted the connectivity language several years ago, we also adopted the ability to have waivers. And where we're doing 20 lots instead of the normal 40, where you're looking at the size and so forth, this is a prime candidate for a waiver, and for us to not approve it at this point, I feel is a mistake.
I think it makes sense when there's an actual development being proposed, then you look at it and make a determination, is a waiver appropriate in that case, but there's not even a development plan for this, this area.
Okay, before that becomes a conversation, I must say, does anyone else have any comments? And we're in a voting session now, so there's no public hearing. We're voting on the waiver. We have a motion by Councilman Christensen and a second by Councilwoman Lamb.
A motion to amend, right?
A motion to amend, yes. Would you call the roll, please?
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
No.
Gaylor-Baird?
No.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
No.
Showb?
No.
Motion lost, three to four.
Now our original resolution? I think that's where we are now, right?
Yes.
On the CUP.
Final vote.
I have a question. It says, it says with requested waivers, the one in front of me.
I think we just addressed that.
Jane's talking about the agenda item.
I believe those are other waivers that the Planning Commission did approve.
There's other waivers on the-
Oh, additional waivers, okay, all right. That are not the ones that we have been discussing, okay.
Would you like to address those? Okay. So I think we had a motion by Councilwoman Eskridge?
Yes.
And I don't remember where the second was from.
Second, Christensen.
Second from Christensen. I'm assuming there's no additional discussion, and would you call the roll on the CUP?
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor-Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
No.
Motion lost, three to four.
Now our original resolution? I think that's where we are now, right?
Yes.
On the CUP.
Final vote.
I have a question. It says, it says with requested waivers, the one in front of me.
I think we just addressed that.
Jane's talking about the agenda item.
I believe those are other waivers that the Planning Commission did approve.
There's other waivers on the-
Oh, additional waivers, okay, all right. That are not the ones that we have been discussing, okay.
Would you like to address those? Okay. So I think we had a motion by Councilwoman Eskridge?
Yes.
And I don't remember where the second was from.
Second, Christensen.
Second from Christensen. I'm assuming there's no additional discussion, and would you call the roll on the CUP?
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor-Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next in our public, next in our public hearing ordinance's second reading, I'll call items six A and B together. They're approving a conservation easement agreement among the City of Lincoln, Lower Plast-South Natural Resources District, and NEPCO to preserve the easement area generally north of McCormick Drive between North 56th and North 70th Street, consisting of approximately 113.76 acres, and annexation 17010, amending the Lincoln Corporate Limits map by annexing approximately 211 acres of property generally located at North 56th and Fletcher Avenue.
Good evening, David Carey with the Planning Department.
Good afternoon, Mr. Carey, thank you.
What we have before you is, Ben Higgins is here from the Watershed Management Section of our Public Works Department. What we are here to hopefully quickly explain is that we have a coming together and meeting of the minds on an annexation proposal that came forward last year, went to Planning Commission in September of 2017, and then came before you in October of 2017, and this is the NEPCO property off of North 56th Street. It's an area that is largely undeveloped, but ended up being basically a donut hole in the city limits, and you'll see on the overhead how this has worked out as it comes up. There we go. What we have here is, this is 56th Street, Fletcher Ave is here. This is the property in question. What you see shaded around it are existing city limits, and so it was an area that had not been brought into the city in the past, it was part of the annexation package that we brought forward in 2017. At the time of the hearing with the, both the Planning Commission and the City Council, part of the discussion turned towards the desire from the property owner, NEPCO, to pursue a conservation easement. We agreed with that, to move forward with that conversation. What has happened over the last year now is that we have slowly but surely worked that out, and we have agreement on the conservation easement. So you have both the conservation easement ahead, in front of you tonight for public hearing, and also return of the annexation that we waited until that conservation easement was put in place on the property. We do have Bob Caldwell here in the audience representing NEPCO. He is available to answer any questions that you might have on that, but we have worked things out, we are ready to move forward, and we are all on the same page. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for Mr. Carey?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Lamb?
Thank you. First, I just want to make sure we're addressing A and B together, correct? Okay, thank you. I didn't want to get ahead of myself. I understand that this is undeveloped land and it's actually wetlands, correct?
Portions of it, yes.
Portions of it, and so when it's annexed in, then we, the city is responsible for maintenance of the wetlands?
No, we are not responsible for wetlands. It, the maintenance responsibility still belongs to the owner of it. We do have a conservation easement on it, but we are not responsible for the maintenance of that.
Okay, and so that was my question, if there would be a cost associated with us annexing in as far as any maintenance at all?
No, what we do is we periodically check these periodically, every once in a while, just to make sure nothing's going on in there, or we have people that are out inspecting all the time and take, and if they see something, then they'll call us up and then we'll, we'll look at the conservation easement and see what measures we need to take to make sure it stays intact.
Thank you.
Any questions? Councilman Eskridge?
I'd like to hear from Mr. Caldwell.
Before we do that, I'd like, I'd like a definition of a conservation easement. Can you do that in twenty words or less?
I can give a shot. So we do conservation easements all the time, and we actually have a standard boilerplate language, and this follows a lot of that boilerplate language. So what we're trying to do is just conserve areas that are floodplains, tree masses, wetlands. And so what it does is just preserves it, so you can't fill it, you can't put signs on it, you can't put buildings on it, and so it's just to preserve those natural, environmental, beneficial properties that those areas have. And we've, we've gone through this quite a number of times in the past, so.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Caldwell, would you yield for a question from Councilman Eskridge?
I will. Bob Caldwell, 1815 Y Street, NEPCO. Just wanted to make sure you got some face time, since you were most photogenic in the law school class of 1996. Well, you were in that class too, and you've aged better than I have, so. So tell us about this in terms of NEPCO and where we've gotten to, and are you satisfied? Well, one, I think it's a testament to the public-private partnership between the NRD, the city, and NEPCO.
Tim Cockens, 6930 Crooked Creek Court. I'm requesting an update to the zoning for the property where I have my dental practice, 4740F Street. Two reasons, basically. One, to be consistent with my neighbors to the north and to the south. Also, for signage purposes, which are a little bit less restrictive in the O2 designation, again, consistent with what my neighbors to the north and south are doing.
Thank you. Questions? Councilwoman Eskridge?
Dr. Cockens, good to see you.
Nice to see you.
So, a new building? Is that your plan, or what?
This building was built in 1955. It was updated, I believe, in 82 or 84. I think it's, I think it's working under a special permit that was issued in 55 and updated at that remodel time. It's been a medical building since its construction, and since 2002, when we purchased it, it's been my dental practice. So not a new building.
Okay. That was not quite clear if you were building new on that site or not. Okay.
Other questions from the council? Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you.
Is anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this agenda item? Seeing no one coming forward, let's go to 6, no, let's still go to 6D.
That concludes our public hearing. We can move into the voting session.
I like voting.
Ordinance's third reading, item 7A, amending pay schedules for employee groups whose classifications are prefixed by the letter E to be effective August 23, 2018, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Gaylor Baird, second one by Councilwoman Raybold. Discussion of the motion. Would you call roll, please?
Camp?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Item 7B, amending the pay schedule of employee groups whose classifications are prefixed by the letter W to be effective August 23, 2018, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Gaylor Baird, second by Councilwoman Christiansen. Discussion. Would you call the roll, please?
Camp?
Yes.
We got off. No, you're right. I'm sorry. I was in the wrong place.
Don't confuse me.
Wait, I think. Would you call the roll, please?
Camp?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob? Motion carried seven to zero.
Now we need 7C, correct?
Next, we're on 7C. Amending pay schedule of certain employee groups whose classifications are assigned to the pay ranges prefixed by the letter X to be effective August 23, 2018, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Gaylor Baird, second by Councilwoman Christiansen. Discussion. Would you call the roll, please?
Camp?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Our resolutions on first reading are items 8A through E. Ordinance's first reading are items 9A through C. Our pending list are items 11A through C. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda and not plan to appear on a future agenda may do so at this time, since it is an open microphone night.
This is a public comment night. Anyone wishing to address the council may. I'd like to remind everyone that this is a chance for the public to speak to the council. It's been tradition that the council not engage in conversation with testifiers. We are here to listen, and I would encourage everyone to be respectful, speak respectful, and act like grownups.
Thank you. My name's Emily Killam. I'll put on my address here when I'm done. This is the second time that I've come to speak to the council on the issue of safe storage ordinance in Lincoln for firearms. And I just want to say that, you know, my son was invited to a friend's house, and as his mom, I have to do my job, and I ask if firearms are present in the home. And if firearms are present in the home, how are they stored before I can allow my child to go to that home to spend time? You know, this week, just this week, the school resource officers were introduced into the middle schools in Lincoln as, you know, Lincoln Public Schools and Lincoln City Police doing their job to keep kids safe in the, you know, in the face of firearm danger. And I come here on a week where two more firearm thefts were reported from unlocked vehicles in this city. And in response to that, the Lincoln Police Department has put out on their Twitter and on their Facebook a 9:00 PM reminder every night at 8:55. They post, everyone, please put your garage door down, lock your vehicle, remove any valuables and firearms, every night at 8:55. This is Lincoln Police politely asking the citizens to please remove firearms from their vehicles because there is no rule that says that you can't put your firearm in your unlocked vehicle and leave it available for the public to get a hold of. So tonight, I'm here to request that you guys please do the jobs that you were elected to do, and do the part of the safe storage and the part of firearm, firearm prevention that is in your job, and to think about an ordinance that would make it a rule so that the police can do their jobs, and more than politely ask folks to remove firearms from vehicles, but actually ticket them and cite them if they choose not to. And allow the Lincoln Public Schools to go back to doing their job of educating students and spending time doing that instead of being worried about kids getting a hold of unlocked weapons. And, you know, I appreciate Councilwoman Shob, your talk about how to behave appropriately in the council chamber. But, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't say that three times I witnessed one member of this council, Mr. Camp, abusing power in a way that sets up the dynamic of you all up there on the dais, knowing and being experts of government, and us down here, just coming and, you know, addressing our council and asking you to please help us out with an issue that's important to us. And I sat here for three meetings and watched on TV as no one responded to that. And we're asking our kids to keep themselves safe by if you see something, say something. And I saw abuse of power in a situation where that behavior is designed to be threatening to citizens, to keep them from coming, and residents of the city from coming and bringing their issues. And so the fact that no one here saw something and said something at that time in that public comment, and educated the public that they in fact don't have to respond to inappropriate questioning, is important. So the fact that you didn't see something, I saw something, and I'm going to call out that abuse of power when I see it. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Killam, for your time and your testimony. Next testifier, please.
Hi, my name's Amanda Gailey. I'm a resident of Lincoln, 2510 South 74th Street. In 2004, 17-year-old Bobby Lon of Lincoln was shot and killed when he showed his friend his hunting rifle. In 2008, 13-year-old Nick Marshalik was accidentally shot and killed at his grandfather's house in Raymond. In 2009, two boys were playing at an RV park near Milford when the 13-year-old accidentally shot and killed the 10-year-old with his father's gun. And with that shooting, a police spokesperson said there was no way to describe this but tragic, but I would add the adjective preventable. No adults were charged with anything in those cases, according to media reports. So let's go to 2018. In February of this year, a Beatrice High School student was arrested for calling himself the next school shooter. Also in February, a Bellevue West student threatened to shoot classmates who supported gun control. In March, an Aurora Middle School student brought a gun to school. In July, two teenagers in Lincoln accidentally shot a pregnant woman while robbing her boyfriend. In August, another Bellevue West high school student was arrested for taking a gun to school. Nothing prevents adults from allowing those minors access to guns. Many people were surprised a couple of months ago when Councilman Camp walked out of a meeting when things got too political, as though politics is not the very business of this committee. But right now, what I see is the entire committee avoiding necessary action because it's too political. And so I'd just like to leave you with the thought, if not you, who? If not now, when? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gailey. Next testifier, and if you would, yeah. Thank you.
My name is Camille Yakino. I live at 2510 South 74th Street, and I, like many other Lincoln residents, support a safe storage ordinance. A safe storage ordinance would save lives. It is time for the adults in our community to take action against the gun violence epidemic that plagues our nation. It is your duty as members of the city council to represent the wishes of your constituents, and this means passing common sense gun legislation. Mr. Camp, I am one of your constituents, and I am 14 years old. The last time I spoke here, you told me and other activists to stop speaking at these open mic sessions. You are a disgrace to democracy, and you have been on this council longer than I have been alive. If you are still here when I am an adult, I will run against you and beat you myself. Please take action toward a safe storage ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. Yakino.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Zuckerman. I have written down my address for you. So I was very happy to hear reminders to the council to act like adults. But I came here, and I sat through the discussion, again, of the cul-de-sac and the wetlands, so I'm going to say what I came here to say, which is that I'd be remiss to not come back and address what happened at the last public comment session, and that I'm disappointed in all of the committee members that allowed one member to make accusations of citizens who, as Emily pointed out, are down here and not up there in positions of power. Those accusations are unfair, given that power dynamic. And quite honestly, to me, it felt McCarthyist, and its attempt to paint us is unpatriotic. Literally, we are, for the most part, a group of women who have come to ask you for an ordinance out of our desire to protect children, the elderly, women who face abuse and violence in their homes. They are the least among us. We have been here to protect life and liberty and the pursuit of happiness of those people, and we are being branded un-American. Signs in the face of such actions is to be complicit. Were we supposed to be scared or cowered by these accusations of being part of a decentralized group whose membership largely depends on the ability to print stickers off the internet? Their main activity is to dress in mourning while exercising free speech rights. Perhaps you missed on the website where it says they are committed to nonviolence. It's not about violence, and it never has been. It's about women with words that you don't want to hear. So I, for one, am not going to sit silently in the face of that bullying and let those accusations go. I'm going to continue to ask that we use our legal ability to set our own firearm ordinances in Lincoln, which is something that NEGV has been actively protecting in the entirety of their existence with the legislature. That we have that ability to do so is thanks to their hard work. Such gun ordinances as safe storage are not unconstitutional. The entire state of Massachusetts has done it, which surely many of you, if not all of you, know. They currently have a Republican governor, and I'd like to point out, as a New Englander, they have had many Republican governors in the modern era. And perhaps you also missed that the recently re-elected Republican governor of the great state of Vermont was one that finally passed stricter gun laws after Parkland, even though Vermont has a very low gun death to the number of guns in the state. Keeping citizens safe is not a partisan issue. It's the role of government, because sometimes people need help being safe and keeping others around them safe. We have smoking laws for this very reason. And in Nebraska, municipalities are free to set stricter ordinances around smoking, just like we have for firearms. We have secondary fines for not wearing your seatbelt, or for texting while driving in Nebraska, which is to encourage us to keep ourselves and others around us safe. We're not asking for anything radical, but for a common sense ordinance that would keep guns out of the hands of unauthorized users, which we have heard over and over happens on a weekly, if not daily, basis in Nebraska. And I would say this, for those of you that are scared of the NRA, I believe we have members of NEGV that will happily help you organize a gallery show or dramatic reading of your hate mail. Because they are the bullies, and they are the ones who should be ashamed of what they are doing, not a group of unpaid women who care about Lincoln and the least among us here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zuckerman.
Hi.
Hi.
Judith King, again.
Hi, Ms. King.
This is about finding your voice. I was going to be here today to give Mr. McCarthy a hard time and let him know that his questioning at the end of our comments last time that we were here were offensive and very intimidating, and that I believe the council might need to make a much stronger effort to contain Mr. McCarthy, who was clearly out of control. After watching another intimidator, the president, on the news this morning, and seeing him standing in front of a burnt-out forest, talking about how we could prevent forest fires, and how he said the ground was so, so dry, climate change, so dry, I think we have much bigger problems on our hand. There were four people standing beside the president in that burnt-out forest, listening to him, and staying silent. They knew that raking the forest floor was not the answer to the problems, and they still said nothing. Why? Why? Could it be they were afraid or intimidated? I totally understand the afraid intimidated part. We have felt it here the last time we were at this mic. And we have had seen a close-up of a GOP congressman that was afraid of googly eyes. Mr. Whizpopper himself was frightened enough to have his chief of staff intimidate and threaten the job of a UNL professor just for thinking googly eyes and the word fartinberry were funny. And yet, he was not afraid. He was even proud. He signed a bill to take 230 million people off their health insurance, without a thought of loss of life, home, job, farm, or business for these people. It didn't matter to him. Though it did make me curious, which one of us is more afraid of googly eyes or having a pre-existing condition and not being able to get insurance? Could it be others standing next to the president didn't say anything because they need money from the federal government to rebuild their fires, or from the fires, the same way politicians stay silent about any type of sensible gun control while taking money from the NRA because they wouldn't be able to get elected without it? And really, why is everyone so upset with the NRA, who some call the murder lobby? Can you imagine? Could it be because they want to sell guns at any cost and do nothing to prevent murder with guns daily? They take in millions and spend it on lobbying legislators, and nothing for shooting victims. Could it be that people are angry? Angry about the use of guns in suicides, about women being wounded or murdered by gun violence, children murdered at schools, elementary, junior high, high school, and colleges, black kids by police, police being murdered, families, families being murdered in their homes, in their churches, synagogues, mosques, movie theaters, concerts, bars, private parties, treatment centers for vets, shopping centers, just walking down the dang street, riding in their car, political events like with Senator Gabby Gifford and her staff, the D.C. Democrat and Republican baseball game, and to go way back, President Kennedy, Bobby Kennedy, and Martin Luther King. And the only thing the NRA suggests are more, more, and more guns, and no attempt to slow down these murders with just maybe bump stocks, restricting automatic weapons, locking up guns, mental health legislation, gun registration, and again, locking up guns. We are just a few women who came to this council, meeting time and time again to talk about safe storage, to save the lives of children. All of us have family or friends that have been wounded or killed, or are survivors of gun violence. We have brought this to your attention again and again, and had people show up that we've never even met to testify about safe storage. If we can find our voices without fear against these powerful, powerful foes like the NRA, with all their money and influence, you can certainly do the right thing and stand up to protect our children. Don't be afraid to stand up and speak truth to power.
Thank you, Ms. King. Is there anyone else that would like to testify? Take advantage of the public comment portion of our agenda?
Mr. Chair, seeing no one coming forward, I move adjournment.
Second. Have a motion by Councilman Camp, and a second by Councilman Eskridge to adjourn. Would you call the roll, please?
Camp?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes, we are adjourned.
Motion carried, seven to zero.